Sheriff Anthony Zapsen, Andrew Bishop here, Bo Cotten.
Yeah.
Axel Zapsen, Martin Neterman.
Right.
Matthew Breach.
Right.
We're cool.
All right. Purpose of this meeting today is to receive public input on zoning and subdivision revisions. Do you want to, what would y'all prefer, Lafferty, explain it, do you think they wrote it down? Or I don't wanna, from Sheriff, you wanna go through it?
I can give the planning, zoning development change, that's chapter twelve.
Nice.
I think everybody got it, that's the short sheet, the one sheet with two numbers on it.
Yep.
All it's doing in there is addition maps approved by planning and zoning police jury. Be less than three acres will be, it took after work automatically changes to R one will be rezoned after the police jury approves it to R one. No words, and that's done by lot size. So we just took out the words automatically. I think a little further than in the next section, twelve dash one oh three, it changes the minimum lot size from twelve five to eighty seven one twenty with a hundred foot of frontage and a minimum lot size shall be two acres. Period. And that's the zoning change for R one classification. All the rest of the changes, and the biggest thing is, is the ones I sent to you, the only change, Sam didn't make any changes to it.
He just had the one, the one word, right?
He just, he just, he had a problem with the, all taken up. He thought we were saying it automatically and automatically was actually being scripted, not putting it. So, that's okay, but he wanted to change to instead of being bold or a different color, new word, new verbiage is all underlined now. So everything we're changing is un, adding is underlined. Strikes through is still what's being taken out. And there's a lot of nitpicky format, paragraph type, intention type errors in there, but as soon as we get it recommended to the jury, I can go through one time and fix all those. I don't wanna go fix them and then have to go back and modify it two or three times. For this easy enough to do.
Yeah, here I'll page nineteen, still got Ascension in there. Nineteen, this is probably nineteen.
I thought I got them all.
I searched for Ascension.
Yeah, well, you got most of them, but that was the only one that I saw. Down at the bottom, parish of Ascension, one, two, three, four.
Isn't it an A?
It says three.
Three A, right? The range of streets.
Well, like I said, fix the line, that's, that's the only one.
Yeah.
The one I just got. I just got this one yesterday.
Oh, yeah, it is. I'll fix it. I fixed it earlier in that paragraph.
Steve, can I ask a question? For us to be able to talk about what y'all talking about, shouldn't this be noticed by us twenty-four hours ago before this meeting? Maybe not. That's what the rules are, aren't they?
No, there's gonna be another full public hearing on this.
Okay, but just like, what I'm saying is like running, the stuff y'all discussing about shouldn't be, where we can have a copy of this to discuss it? I mean, you have a formal meeting, that's what I'm asking. When y'all discussing stuff that we don't even, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well, we've.
Something we should have, be able to have a copy.
This is, well, this is what the discussion for the meeting is right now, is so that it's, it's being had right now. So, um, which other meetings, it's been through the other meetings, but there then is, if there is objection, the opportunity for the objection is at the police jury, not projected here.
So we can't, we can't have a copy of what y'all discussing? And so we're known with going on?
They can request a copy, yeah, they can request a copy. You can request a copy here, it is.
You might make a copy?
Don't make a copy of that one. Here, make a copy of that.
I'm just saying, I mean, if you go.
I understand what you're saying, but you can request, once you do a public hearing, you can request the option, definitely. I understand what you're saying.
In that way, I understand what y'all talking about. Could you repeat, could you repeat the, what you said about the taking out the?
The zoning change?
The automatic rezoning, which was always ridiculous, they had it in there, but, so, read that again, please, or?
That's an easy one, I can read it, but.
So.
Basically, we just said that it's gonna be two acres and it's gonna be vetted through.
Now, that's the police jury or that's y'all recommendations?
That's ours to them, we're taking out the words automatically.
All right, last my question, so someone wants to come in here, if, if y'all go to two acre lot minimum, but someone wants three acres, it's not automatically zoning, or one, it says will be rezoned to one. So this body will approve the three acre, three acre lot, and then if that, so what is it at that point if you gotta go through the rezoning? It's still A two?
No, it's R one, you don't have to go through rezoning. Once we create a lot, three acres or less, it's gonna be R one. Size is what determines R one. Nothing else. Cause you can do the same thing with the A two lot that you can with an R one lot, except.
So I really don't know the difference between, I guess I don't understand the difference between.
Automatically and what we doing?
Yeah.
Got rid of word automatically, that's all we hear.
That request of the R.
And we put in a minimum of two acres.
Okay, so for all practical purposes, it's.
Still, don't be automatically. Just don't say it. And once we approve the map for three acres or less.
It gains nothing.
It's, it's gonna be.
And this is for zoning on the lots or?
Zoning on individual lots.
On this parish?
Yeah.
What are you gonna do about the town lots?
We don't have nothing with town lots.
Oh, so if I'm in the town, y'all can't send a duty down?
No, you got to go fight with a different collection of opinions. Going forward, sir?
Oh, I thank, appreciate that.
And then you, then we gonna be way up on each day.
We actually say town, which I guess is not really a town, we deal with Ethel.
We deal with Ethel Wilson, the Royal Woods, we don't do Jackson Slaughter and kind of like.
You own a town, you own a bit, there are only two villages.
The, yeah, two villages and incorporated Ethels.
The change there was the two acres. That's what the, that's what the police jury asked us.
To change.
Too soon. Makes changes in norms, which shows the minimum lot size being the two acres.
In the whole parish. Can I ask a question?
I don't know if we got a straight answer for all of this.
This is only one question.
The discussion that, um, that police jury has had from sitting in their meetings is a density issue.
A what?
Density.
So what's, how does the two acres, uh, on the twelve five, what used to be the mobile home margins, is just, how's that affect the mobile home margins?
If it existed, it's, but beyond that, it doesn't.
So I mean, y'all want to put a trailer on the property, is it now put out two acres?
Or ask for variance.
Huh?
Or ask for variance, or ask for variance for, in family addition, if it would be discussed.
Putting the caregiver, and, that's the other thing too, it's already in the ordinance and I don't care how much land you have, if you're putting a caregiver or a family member and you got a stick built house, you can set mobile home there with nothing. But minutes. Now, if you go to your old person dies or your caregiver don't need it anymore, you turn it into a rental property, then you gonna survey it out. Cause you gotta check.
And then you go, how much frontage you get to have?
Inside of, another thing, you gotta have a minimum, there ain't gonna be any frontage, you gonna have a servitude to get to it, cause most of the time those mobile home lots, it's just gonna test to thirty acres or spot.
I heard it was about a hundred and twenty-five feet.
It's a hundred foot minimum. Hundred foot minimum, and it's, uh, but if it's in the middle of a large piece, that's a certain, certain to get to it.
So the police jury, they either recommended the two acre lots?
Yeah.
So y'all as a zoning board, y'all have nothing to say about, y'all, I thought the way this thing was set up originally, that when this was all done in the beginning, the zoning board was supposed to have recognizations from the parish. And then in return, they were supposed to make reservations, or not exact words, but I mean, reservations to the police. So what we're doing, is what y'all are doing is completely backwards, correct?
No, we get dictated sometimes, they get passed.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm not talking about, I'm just, I'm trying to figure this out.
There's a little bit of, of, a lot of that going on, that it's, from the police jury, they're hearing that they want, that.
From where?
From the community, they're getting, they're getting complaints on roads, they're getting complaints on all sorts of items. Their consensus of what they believe is to move to a two acre minimum.
And that's gonna solve, that's the police jury's?
It's, it's not gonna solve everything, but it's gonna change some issues that you do run into, it's gonna change some of your issues. It will address some.
And definitions of the large neighborhood come in. We just, then we decide they're large and small, we break, y'all discuss some definitions.
There's a whole lot that Josh is gonna address with here, we just, like, right this second, we're just on the zoning side of it.
If I could speak on the density part of that.
Who's in here, sir?
I'm recording a lot of them here that represent the parish, whether you were here for when these subdivisions come in or.
The guy we're waiting for.
Probably, I'm coming off, uh, coming off a traffic battery, I couldn't believe getting off a highway and tend to a lot of traffic, I've never, I've been in.
Well, they're gonna slob that and then get a two acre lot.
Uh, it's gonna at least, yeah, it'll, it'll, prevent it from getting worse, I hope, yeah. The density issues, I think, stretch far into situations of infrastructure, you have water infrastructure, your fire protection, your police protection, I mean, right now, you have two sheriff's deputies at the control of the entire parish. And I understand that, you know, more rooftops produce more tax money, but all of that takes time. Right now, you need a minimum eight inch line for fire protection for fire hazards in the neighborhood, when you come in with a hundred block neighborhood, you're gonna need the fire protection for that, there are other means of getting that fire protection through these pumps that you could put in the detention ponds, but those are the big concerns, is that just having adequate water, having adequate infrastructure in place, and.
Okay, do you live in this parish?
No, sir, I'm in Ascension Parish, where we experience exponential growth.
Oh, so you're gonna come from Ascension Parish and help us up here?
I hope so, that's the hope.
Well, what, this is what, I mean, I've been.
So, so Mr. Ori has been directed by both us and the police jury, so it's not, he's been helpful in putting the ideas together, he served for so many years.
Five years, I'm glad I'm going there.
There, so they went through when they were making the changes, so, biggest reasons he has is he is, they have experienced writing, writing the, uh, changed the ordinances and those items, and they have experience to come guide us, the, the, we're, we're leading in the direction, and our parish is leading in the direction, and the police jury has evolved, we have, when we have been involved as well. There's a lot. He's not really coming up here as, as say, the one type shit.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just.
No, I'm just, I.
I'm gonna get involved in this because evidently a lot of people need to get involved in this because a lot of stuff y'all coming up with is bullshit, in a way, okay?
I'm just, but that's the reason for these public hearings.
Public meetings, that's exactly right. Cause I mean, I'm sixty-three years old, I've built, I've been doing destruction work, subdivisions on Perkins Road.
In Baton Rouge.
Baton Rouge. I've never done one in Ascension because they dropped the ball years ago, that was their own fault, it wasn't, wasn't their, or that was.
This was after Katrina, they experienced.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, I mean, and I know all about the water, the pressure, hydraulics on the roads, the ditches, everything like that, okay? So I mean, I'm not, I'm not educated that good, but I know enough. So, but what I'm saying is, the thing that, when Zachary came through during the eighties, okay, what Zachary did, if they had a small road out there, like Rollins Road is a nice subdivision, well, the first one was a dairy farm in the corner right there, you wanna let Jeff one time? Okay, well, they were the same thing this parish is right now, as well. So with the contractor and then the subdivision guy come in, says, hey, we want to put a nice hundred house. So we don't have, you don't have infrastructure for this. Ah, I'll put it in, right? Okay, let them put it, why should we deny our parish people from being able to make money? Off of their own property, they work the asphalt and pay the maintenance, okay?
And that falls into the rights of use of land. You wanna go buy two hundred acres and develop it into the sub, into a subdivision, that's your right to do it, and there are ordinances that are in place now in these police and parish that will allow you to do it, you follow those guidelines, you build the road to code, you make sure the drainage is taken care of, you're not gonna.
Water's very.
Post, you have to get water there, if that means building a well, if that means putting in a tower or a ground.
That's what I'm trying to find out exactly where all this is.
We have had this happen up on Plank Road already, Randy, since I've been on this board, the guy bought the land, gonna cut it up, had a big chunk behind it for future development, and the trouble was, he had a two inch line running up.
And I agree.
And he could not get his six inch main, it was, the only way he could put in the subdivision he wanted to put in, was he had to put a six inch line from four twelve up to his subdivision.
We put.
And he says, never mind, I'll do it that way.
Yeah, costly, and that's the sell of every life.
We put six, the six inch line on Rollins Road, from, from Rollins Road to Old Seventy Sixty Four, because of that subdivision. So that's what I'm saying is, I, I don't like, I hear some of these ideas, because it bleeds into the other people who wanna do smaller stuff in here. It gets drug into, that's what I'm trying to say.
I think one of the bigger things that people were seeing across the parish was that we were creating four lots maybe, or five?
Yeah, four lots.
People getting a number on.
I've got a bunch of them.
Off of a small servitude, and it's a thirty foot right, a passage.
Forty-five, actually.
It's forty-five?
Twenty-five.
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 And that servitude can be broken up, let's just say per say conversation, two acre lots, and that roadway to get to the back lots was not built to any kind of a standard that was gonna be able to be maintained effectively for the people buying those lots, by the parish.
No, I.
Not turned over to the parish, it would be, it would be a servitude agreement between the landowners. And I think that's what they're trying to avoid, I feel like that's what they're trying to avoid, is that if that's gonna happen, we're gonna do it by putting in a road that's gonna be later on adopted by the parish, and it's gonna have the new road frontage, that hundred foot minimum, you're gonna create that public road frontage by dedicating that new servitude, you're gonna dedicate that right away to the parish.
How many parish, how many roads have been taken back into this parish in the last ten years?
Taken back?
How many, how many new roads has this parish accepted?
It's, there's a few of these subdivisions.
About fifty.
Couple subdivisions, about a dozen.
But nothing else, no other roads have been brought to us fans.
So when you go down Palsy Road where I live at?
Right.
Okay? Uh, and maybe you can answer me and help me with this. Palsy Road is one of the oldest roads in this parish. You go down the road and you get down there in spots, and it's, oh, he lives there, he knows what I'm talking about, she lives there, there's spots that's twelve feet wide in it. There's two or three trees in there, it's ain't planted, about like eleven hours, okay? So, if I took my piece of property and I wanted to put four lots on it, and what you're saying is that the parish has had a big problem with this, okay? Cause, you know, these people are, the parish is not gonna take the road over, have, they ever took any of the ones I had, Joe?
Palsy Road's a private road?
It's a parish road.
When you have a public road frontage, I would hope.
Oh, yeah, I have public, public road, okay.
So you wouldn't be able to stop that, it'd be along with, already determined public road?
I just thought it was gonna.
No, I'm talking about in my, if I wanted to buy my piece of property, okay, this, this is what, this is all, that's what I'm getting at. Okay, so, you, I understand the subdivisions and the water and the, I've done everything, okay, there's a lot of people in the parish do much down there. But, what y'all, what's your, some of your ideas are great, but they're not, they're not practical in this parish? Okay, well, I, that's what, okay, so that's what I'm saying, just like right there, if I, if I go down that road, it's only twelve feet wide. Right now, the fire trucks have to go slow. I have a house coming there before, it has to go slow, okay?
You're gonna trail it, anything.
Anything, okay, so when I get there, then you're, y'all recommending through the great line I'm hearing, this one I'm hearing, through the great line, is that, oh, when you do this four lots now, we want you to have an asphalt road? So, can y'all, or can you explain to me as an engineer, why would I, why would you drive from a twelve foot wide road to parish office? The substance. Up a mop, then turning to a nice asphalt road, hold on, that you have recommended to the parish, I'm not, I didn't, no, I'm just trying to ask some questions and you answer my questions. And then you recommended this to the parish, okay? And then you gonna have ditches and nice concrete and everything, right? Just split with fire. How is that gonna, how is that gonna help anybody?
I would say that there are areas that are placed, the family partition being a variant, hardship.
I'm not, I'm asking you, how is that road gonna help anybody?
I can give you a, a scenario that we had, that we ran to, where we state as a parish in Ascension, and I've seen this in Livingston, where the minimum standard road to put any new roadways off of was twenty foot, and we've had some come in seventeen and eighteen feet. The parish is just not gonna allow you to create a new road off of that road, they're gonna deny you to create.
Where did y'all, don't you, don't you advise the parish?
Uh, I mean, everything, I mean.
I mean, like on roads, it's about you.
So it's not.
We make sure it's done to a standard.
So you, have you been down Ozzy Road?
I've not been down Ozzy Road, I don't know where Ozzy Road is, I'm not sure which one that is.
So, I mean, I would like you to come over there and ride down that road and see if you can advise these people up through the police jury about how they could fix that road before they ever do.
With a lot of money, it sounds like.
Oh, well, wait, money's no problem as long as you're spending my money, right?
So, there's still opportunity to develop property with road frontage, so there's not, the, the problem running into is the access to lots high.
I, I can understand it, but I'm trying to find out the justification.
Well, that is, that is, that is coming into the reason, we approved one in here, middle of last year, eighteen hundred foot of, of servitude, the one to the property, which somebody at the back of that servitude is gonna be sitting here, ten years from now, having to rebuild road to get out of there.
That's their problem, you call it.
Well, that's their problem, also the, well, but what's happening is, is becoming a parish problem.
How?
Service, those properties are being divided by us and represented by us as property that has a road in it. And then the real estate agents are then turn around and saying, oh, you have a roadway into it. They're trying to get away, the majority of the parish complaints right now, roadway wise, are coming on the servitude right now.
From the people who are living on the parish road?
No, the people who are living on the servitude.
Well, see, that's kinda like the bill when they moved up here, okay? You move on a gravel road, ten feet wide, but you want me, y'all, they want us to build a major subdivision highway road, okay? And I, I know how to build one, I, I, it's all, I understand all that, okay? So that's what I'm saying, there's gotta be somewhere between the middle of this, this is a little, I mean, you can go to a limestone or jack, I built some of these roads, were they twenty, like twenty-four feet, twenty-two feet wide, ditches, ditchings, ditches, everything, okay? Fire trucks can come up and down at eight a month, you can go on Andrew's lane and go down, you can go faster down my road than you're gonna go down Andrew's lane. And everyone of them, so my point is, why do you have to saddle these people with all these expenses on asphalt road? You know what the square footage on a rare, air foot road is? For a mile? I mean, like the price? It's pretty damn steep, man.
It is.
So that's why I'm asking, is there no ground, no middle ground here, it's cutting all of one another?
I would say through the hardships or for the.
Through the hardships.
Hardships.
A hardship or a variant, it's where you can't afford to put that road in, you wanna break that land up for your family, or you wanna break that up for a family.
I just wanna get my retirement money out of it, I'll be on work, all I like to pay for my property, and I have a group of people, I'm not picking on them, I'd say, an engineer that I don't know, never met before, is gonna tell me what I can do or what I can't, and cut me out of a lot of money.
I think that you have the opportunity to come up here and present your case.
That's what I'm doing, that's.
Well, even when, even if this passes or if this goes through, even at that point, you would have the opportunity.
Cause this is understood, this is, am I correct, Joe, this was the group that you're supposed to talk to for the zoning? So this is the, where I have to start it, correct?
So, let's, let's, Mr. Ori, can you present what we're actually discussing, we haven't actually hit that yet? So we're still on the two acre stuff, which, you don't have that, so, can you present the side from the subdivision?
Would we go towards the bullet points of?
Yes.
The family partition and?
Yes.
You want me to discuss any of that? Do y'all have questions on the family partition, or?
I don't know what it is, brother, we can just point to it, we know.
Can you just present it to her?
Yeah. Well, I see.
Do you have a page number you can come out of, Josh, we take it as cops and orders of all of them?
So y'all looking at the pending thing, or was kinda scratched out?
Gonna look at the beginning of, uh, the pending, you can see some of the new stuff being underlined, classification of subdivision. Simple subdivisions with five lots or less with a minimum of a hundred foot public road frontage, I think it's pretty simple to say, if a hundred foot public road frontage doesn't exist, it's up to the person that's asking to subdivide, that's why we create that public road frontage with a parish road that is up to the parish standards, which is where we're talking about asphalt roads, uh, twenty-one foot, I think, about east of Michigan, right?
Road itself, dirt, top itself, right?
Um, yes, sir. And these standards are already written to the parish, it's already, you know, the subdivision standard is already there, I think the one thing is just trying to eliminate the servitude and create the servitude, uh, put back lots. Um, without having a hundred foot public road frontage. Uh, major and minor subdivisions on, on sheet two, you can see where the things underlined on sheet two, that's gonna be your minimum lot size, two acres in a major and minor subdivision, um, that's gonna be anything that is going to be, what, what do we land on? How many lots was that, you know, five lots or more? Or is it six lots or more?
It doesn't need more than that, if you gotta put a damn asphalt road in there.
Well, that comes in, I mean, that comes into the option.
I mean, you realize what five lots are gonna cost for a twelve?
We're not, I mean.
I was gonna do your, where?
It was six the other day, we're not.
Six million.
Sixty, or, I mean, we can hold one other meeting, we finish this Saturday.
We still got five more minutes, we were like waiting to start. All right, correct. That's okay, we're seven minutes late.
This one can run over, that's not wrong, but, um.
We passed the long one.
But, and, and there is awareness of some of the road costs, but where we're running into is, we ended up with fire truck stuff, we ended up with all these items happening, that's what's happening, I understand you're talking about a middle, a middle round and a middle, you know, I understand that. But, what we're, what we're, right now, the parish doesn't afford a middle ground, it's not.
It wasn't there?
Doesn't afford, it doesn't exist right now, a middle ground.
So there is no middle ground, y'all, so y'all telling me on the zoning board, there is no middle.
There's not a middle ground.
You don't want that, fall, hell, high water, that ain't gonna happen anymore.
No.
Well, I'm asking, you just said, I'm asking somebody, right, just give them a second.
So, on the family partition, that's where I would say the hardship with the public family partition, of saying you have a square piece of land that has two hundred foot of road frontage or three hundred foot of road frontage, and obviously cannot get the five lots that desire a three hundred foot of road frontage, it will allow that thirty foot servitude access to be created to the back, much like it is now, much like it's, it's, it's creating that. For a family partition, so you would do that to a family partition, hardship or exception or variant, y'all used the terminology is exception or other things before, and I think that we're still using that.
So, can I ask you this? If on that family thing, if we divided five times, is what you're saying, for hardship?
Or it could be more.
Oh, I would just say, let's go for that, okay? Well, when these people, these family people get their property, and later on, their job changes to Texas, and they get ready to sell it, what's gonna happen?
There's no way to control that.
No, that's, that's.
They own fee entitled, that, you have, the parish has allowed a person to create a parcel of land as of a certain date, which will be in the next few months, that is gonna be covered by fee entitled, and they can do with it what they want at that point.
So, okay.
Which is what, what, which is what I feel that we're trying to protect the public from, subdivide these pieces of property, make it into a piece of land that has a, an agreement on gravel road, with the maintenance plan in place to be that they hopefully gets taken care of, someone getting up and aging to that, of a piece of property, can't afford to keep up with that piece of land, or can't keep up with the price of the gravel on that road, and find themselves in twenty years on a piece of property that they're knocking on the parish's door saying, I need you to come do something about road that you don't own, and asking the parish to take that road over.
Okay, can I ask you the other side of that? Is that, all right, so, that's the problem to protect them, the people who's moving here, correct? Yeah, take, yeah, that's.
Yeah, but it's to protect the people that are here too, so, so let's, there's, there's, there's a piece of property that's been discussed, that's been, a lot has been in that piece of property. It was done, it was divided through servitudes, through these little four lot service or five lot service two roads, and when they put lots in behind people, that's what they did. Uh, no roadway, to this day, there's no. Uh, no roadway, to this day, there are no road in there. Um, there was nothing stopping the folks, this is in a very prominent area of the community. Um, there's now, lots got divided, there's four lots and a front lot, I think is how it's set up, and the gentleman's they're moving something back there that is not good for the community, we're getting phone calls a lot.
So, the parish now is going into land use?
No.
Oh, no, that's what we're doing.
Well, it's not, it's not, that is not, well, actually, the parish isn't land, the parish isn't land. So, the parish isn't land used, but that's where the discussion's coming, that basically there's a mud hole going back there, is what's happening now, so.
So that's what I'm saying, this, 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 what I'm getting, what I'm getting at here is, this is a great idea, it has nothing personal, anybody in this. But when you open up this can of worms and you start telling people how they can do and what they can do with their property, which, how much property did you buy in this parish? I'm just, I'm just, I'll use you as an example, another, but two acres, five acres, a hundred, five hundred?
Uh, I don't know, probably twenty at this point.
So, I don't want me or this lady there or this young girl here to tell you, you can't divide your piece of property and just subdivide it and put a nice road. Maybe gravel, make it too heavy standard, okay, twenty two feet wide, ditches, everything, alright? Then make sure that when they're just like when you sell the lots, they have to sign off on a piece of property that says that this is their maintenance, that we do, it comes with the property, okay? I've seen, we've done that before. Jeff has done servitude where the parish comes, where the power comes on, there's nobody can control that, he put water, it's a servitude all the way back there, done it the right way, okay? But what happens is, you know, then I start telling you or this lady or this man or this girl here, starts telling you what you do with your property that you're gonna retire on. And you've worked all your butt all year long for all your life to do this. I don't, that's what you call you land use, that's what the parish is doing, they're sticking their nose into personal people's property. I understand the whole problem, and I agree with this man a hundred percent, one hundred percent of this. But there's got to be somewhere other than just an asphalt road, because when you realize you're gonna put four, two, would you say two acre tracks? So that's one, two, three, that's six, what's six? Six acres you're gonna sell and a piece on the front? Do you know what that, that piece, that the land would be worth, half the land's gonna cost what the damn road's gonna cost? And do y'all realize what y'all, as the zoning, cause I'm gonna go to the police jury. This is, I mean, I'm just, this is getting out of hand. This is, this is, this, you're hitting, y'all are getting into land use, and this man's seen it before, it's down there where he counts on.
So, we had two, we had two police jury members here. And some of us on this, in this body here asked the same exact question. And I said, why can't we have, why can't we go to surrounding parishes and get the standard for their gravel roads?
Eastbound routes has it.
Eastbound routes.
I'm guilty of an eastbound route.
And why can't, and they just continued, they shook their head and said, the parish is not going to accept any more gravel roads.
They don't accept many, I'm just saying, they, they, they even did not accept any roads.
Period.
They're not, they said.
Black gravel road, so that's a body that's like, I don't wanna say, I love you guys, but you guys are pointing out.
So what you're asking is, I hear you. Like, that's what we tried to get some movement on with the police jury, and it was no. There, if, if, if we put forward, because our job is to do all the work to get the words on the paper that the police jury can then approve, that's what they've tasked us to do. If we put forward something that says it is allowed to, to have gravel servitudes, it is a no from the start. That's what they told us, so we don't have the ability, we could.
You can still try.
We can still try, but they sat here and told us it is a non-start.
Okay, God, I understand what you're saying, but that's what, this is where this meeting starts.
Yeah.
It doesn't go to the police jury, I don't care what the police jury tells y'all. You signed on here to be on the zoning board where he did, the rest of it, okay? And your job is to take input from the parishes and try to make a middle area to go to, you know what I'm saying? And make more than one or two regiment connections, okay? That's what this man's knowledge is supposed to be, okay? So what I'm saying is, now, all I'm hearing is hell of high water, y'all aren't gonna go even go up the ladder at all to this, you know what I'm saying? Because the police jury cannot be one hundred percent right about this.
Now, Randy, this has been going on for eight months?
I know, it's been over a while, I know.
This has been going on for.
I've been going on for two years, it's been a while, yeah.
And for those items, it's been going on. So, I mean.
We had a lot of new subdivisions come through the entire preliminary plat procedure here, and it got to the end of it, after everything had been agreed upon, that they made a recommendation, council allowed us to move forward with preliminary plaques, and it got to the end of it, the council said, we're not accepting the roads. And they didn't even wanna take the asphalt roads that were built to their standard.
Well, still, when we may, may have to do, when this keeps going on, you're gonna find out that some of the police jury will have to be taken off their vote, and somebody else will make their decision.
They're voted in, that's it?
That's what I'm getting, so that's what, our, our, our right as a parish resident, that's how our right.
So, let me just, let me play the other side, I'm just, so, piece of property you're getting ready, ready to develop, I'm not sure of your, how your property's set up, but, um, so most of that stuff is ten and twelve acre types that ups down through there, I don't, I don't know how big yours is, but what's your, when you go to develop that, those folks who are living next to you that are on ten acre properties, that bought expecting ten acre properties to be in that area? And, I don't know how big yours is, maybe it's.
I got a hundred fifty acre.
So you have a large piece of property, but you have the ability to develop it then, you have the frontage, and you have the.
No, I don't have it, I, I wanted so much frontage on this piece of property. Okay, and I do have a development next door that Callie Times put in, and half assed it the road in there, I just want to tell you how it is. And the residents had to come back and try to fix their own road, but you know what? They bought that property knowing that when they bought it, okay?
So it's not a parish public?
No, it is not, no, it is not. And I mean, here's what, that's what, that's what I'm saying is the police, if y'all is along zoning board, is missing to me, is that it's not y'all's job to play cop, okay? I mean, y'all's job is, no, 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 because they do it, here's the deal, nobody.
Technically, we are.
Nobody in this parish, in this room paid a note on my police property. Nobody in this property paid a note or paid interest on this property, okay? Nobody in this police worked extra hours to pay that piece of property, but now they're gonna tell me I can't do it unless I put a asphalt road that costs four hundred thousand dollars to four frickin' lots. Okay?
But are you gonna develop it with the laws?
Well, right now, I don't know what y'all deals, I've asked him, he says it's a moratorium, what's his name told me moratorium? I done talked to Kyle Finnegan, he says it ain't, I talked to him a little while ago, he says there's four, so I mean.
It's never, we never lost the four, we never.
There's a parent lot and three additional, is that how it goes?
No, it's, it's your, it's four lots is the maximum you can cut under the moratorium.
Right now.
Under the moratorium.
Any lot.
The current ordinance is whatever's on the front doesn't count, four lots on the servitude. So, what I'm getting is that whenever, like, this people's got this problem next door to them, I've done a lot, house paths up here, you wanna tell people to do? You're buying five acres with this volatile pasture, you're not gonna own, so here's my deal, if them people with the rich, the, the nice subdivision back there don't like this pile of what's going back there, why don't they buy a piece of property? Why should you make the rest of the parish have to, other people in the parish pay for stuff because they don't, they don't like, they should buy, let them buy. You know, why don't they buy a piece of property for the money? I mean, I, well, I'm just saying.
Can I before you too, for all this, I'm still trying to understand the hard surface and the gravel and stuff, so you may have come at the jury just under no circumstances gonna allow gravel. Well, they are under the hardship case for family petition.
Family petition for family.
Okay, but that, that, that seems like they're opening themselves up for a whole lot there, because you're allowing it for family petitions, gravel. I know you say you gotta build it, there are specifications, thirty foot and width and whatnot, I'm not quite sure, read through here casually, Josh. I don't know what the procedure is to, that y'all would grant a hardship for family petition and then so how would this differ, let's just say you've got a family that's gonna do five tracks and there's a private servitude, y'all allow the hardship, whatever that procedure is, they can do gravel according to this, alright, let's use the exact same thing, but it's not a family petition, some dude wants to do the same exact thing. So, this is the question, so, I know, I know you always ask for a variance, but that same guy wants to do the same thing, so you can either ask for a variance, if he doesn't have some variance, what's the standards, it would be a what, sixty foot right of way?
There's not public road frontage for that guy, he's gonna have to create the public road frontage.
And in that, in that case, unless you have the variance, it's gonna be asphalt or a little hard surface?
That's the current.
That the jury's gonna take in?
Because it's gonna be a public road, it's gotta be built to the published road.
Cause from that point, you're taxpayer, you're taxpayer.
If you're doing them.
You would have to create it if you wanna subdivide that piece of property.
And I, I mean, I know y'all may not wanna say, can I kinda poll you guys on where y'all, regardless, I get what you're saying, what you're getting, comments from the jury. But I mean, from whatever thing we're talking about, with family petitions, you might be allowed to gravel road there, and I, I'm not saying we gotta be like E B Y O R. E B Y O R got four hundred fifty thousand people, and they allow these private roads to remain, I think it's sixty foot wide servitude, you know, same thing, you gotta go up to a standard, but they allow it a limestone gravel road for whoever, it doesn't have to be those family petitions. Uh, I mean, what y'all feel on that, that it's all or nothing, for, for seconds, take the police jury out of it, I mean, y'all think? What y'all think about that? I mean, y'all think there should be no avenue for continuation of private servitude roads that built according to standards, that they're gonna have to have a road inspector sooner or later go out there and inspect these private roads? You know, private gravel roads for family petitions, or if you allow it, I mean, y'all have a feel for that, other than just trying to say we're trying to do what the jury wants? I mean, y'all got to have an individual idea on, on this, this whole debate about hard surface, gravel roads, is that gonna be allowed moving forward? Because it can be done right, E B Y O R does it right, and there's state laws, state, I mean, Josh could tell you better than me. You know, every so often, I forget what it is, you gotta have turnarounds for emergency vehicles, I mean, there's standards that apply, it does work. So it's not a matter of these gravel roads can't work, private roads are state private, I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm kinda being devil's advocate, but not just devil's advocate, I believe we should continue to, well, not continue, we don't have it yet, but put that kinda standard in. Because you, you gotta, you got to, man, you got to accommodate all the different economic levels that people find themselves in. You know, it's like Randy said, I mean, man, I, this is my little piece of money I got, property, and I wanna my, you know, optimize my money. Well, there's a standard to optimize it that's not gonna be detrimental to the public, so I'm just saying the same thing I guess Randy's saying, is that you, you wanna, you wanna accommodate everybody realizing that we're all on different economic levels, but as long as you're doing your due diligence to protect the health, safety, and welfare, those three famous words of the public, then you can sleep good at night, that you done all that. So anyhow, I'm just.
I mean, how does, how does, is this group here, I mean, how do y'all feel? Other than what the police jury's told?
No, I'll say, I, I don't know, man. Uh, no, 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 hold on a minute, but I mean, so, where are we running to? I don't believe that the roadway service and houses need to be private. Where there's no ma, there's no way to maintain it on a level that, that exists, there's no way unless you go in and form, uh, homeowners associations and those items to guarantee maintenance of these roads, okay? Uh, the option to get there, in our parish, our parish wants no more gravel roads for the amount of maintenance that they have to take, alright? Uh, that's, that's something that's been stated, that they are accepting some, they are accepting blacktop roads that are built to a standard. That, it'll, it'll change the face of the way things can be divided, the way, um, I don't know, I don't know the shape of your property, but say you have a four hundred foot or two hundred foot access that's sixty foot wide to get to the back piece of your property that was left or whatever, so a roadway would have to be put in there and then split four directions off of that roadway at that point, once you break into that opening. Um, I don't think, my personal opinion, and we have to get to a realm where we're not sticking people in the back of these, uh, properties where they can't get services to. Randy, I've seen, I know the subdivision you did on, only one I know of is the one that's on, uh, Andrew's Lane, I know of that. You're sitting in a different situation, if it is done well, I can probably name two of them that are done that way, okay? I understand where you're, where you're sitting and having this conversation at. Hardship or variance, we never touched on the conversation of, um, not Hockaday Road, we'll take Hockaday too, but I mean, of the roads you're on down there, we never had that discussion about coming off of a, a raggedy gravel road, what the options would be in that case. Um, but, but I do still feel we need to have a way that it can be a parish maintenance road. Because we're sticking people who are retiring at fifty five years old, and the husband dies ten years from now, and the woman's gonna be seventy years old stuck in the back of a property, and that is being seen a lot. Garbage has to go all the way to the front of roads, water service has to come all the way to the front of roads, or you have to put well, and you have to maintain wells.
That's land use is what you're talking about.
I understand that, no, no, and that, that is the conversation to be had, but the, then you touch on those items, the health, safety, and welfare of your, of your community. We've had fire trucks stuck on the right of ways, we've had those issues, that's where my opinion stands as far as you can't, you can't just stick them in the back where they're getting stuck right now, and it's much more, I don't think you're seeing what some of the others are, yours is a dick, honestly, yours is a different situation out there. But we're having problems where they're running out there and scraping the dirt off the top and running a gravel, running two loads of gravel down through.
But Josh, that's because we're bored of any standards at all, that's just the.
I understand.
That's just the developers, like, if they wanna put the money in, so I mean, if you, once you have standards, you're gonna be addressing those concerns.
Well, that's where we're talking about, is standards.
That's what we're talking.
I know, I was saying.
But that is where we're talking about.
I think the gravel, limestone stays next to the same.
But you still, I can bring you the one right now that's never been put anything, the road's falling apart, just from kids going back there parking on the road right now already. I don't, we built the road, that's not my business, I bring you the one right now that is starting to muddy and.
Well, here's, I think, the main point y'all need to really lock in on, Randy made the point a while ago. You're gonna have, if you, if you put standards in, and they gotta build roads on the private, private, those roads, regardless who takes them in or doesn't take them in, they're gonna be better than these nice, uh, lipstick on a pig asphalt gravel roads that you see in springing up, that vary from half an inch to three inches to four inches, and the base is not existing because it wasn't dug right, and the water's not off of it, so, that's what Randy was saying, you're, you're.
We're moving forward.
No, you have a Josh.
But we move this. No, this is what we're looking at moving forward, is what we're having a conversation. What's behind us, we have problems.
Okay, let's go forward, alright, and a black, not black, a little broken out there, that's called it?
No.
Our roof, the parish just got finished painting. That is a joke, a walking joke with your, this is what, see, that's what we're getting into, is that there are only one standard for landowner, but then they go out here and fill that asphalt down, don't clean the ditches, there's water this far from the edge of that road. That road is only gonna last longer to keep that police jury and a couple of these police policemen unhappy and get reelected until they go back to the potholes, okay? Let's be honest, call it, call it what it is.
We're not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing.
So, what, what I'm saying is, and what Jeff's trying to say is, there is standards that you can build for an asphalt road, there's a pattern, this man knows them all day on the green smiling right now. He can build, he can give you standards for a limestone road or an asphalt, a, a gravel road that will last. Now, once I did, to give you a little example, Jeff knows it, each landowner had to sign stating they bought the property. They divided the road, used the expenses equally. So when Granny gets so in the back and her daddy dies, or grandpa dies, and Granny's by herself, and she can't afford to be there no more, that's not my problem, that's not your problem, that's not his problem, that's her problem. You cannot be policeman, policeman, I'm not saying you personally, I'm just, you cannot be the police chairman for the whole parish, okay? That's not y'all's job, y'all's job is to. That's not y'all's job. Y'all's job is to come up with multiple ways to come up with putting subdivision roads at a reasonable price. And correctly with this man's help. He's really a big helping.
So, so just, Randy, take. Take the outside developer, take. TSLD, are you okay with them developing gravel roads?
Here's the problem, hold on, hold on, no, listen to me, listen to.
I'm not, but that, I'm just playing.
Let me play something.
I'm not trying to.
Do you understand what the first thing everybody is? Number one, they're not gonna develop these gra- on gravel road because they're used landage, they buy the land and they cut it to small enough tracks to make their profit. There's no profit on a gravel road, that man knows what I'm talking about right there. He didn't say nothing, but he knows what I'm talking, you don't have to worry about them, they're not gonna put a gravel road in because they can't make enough money from them.
Take them, take them out, let's take somebody from outside.
Okay, let's take somebody else, take anybody, just like John, John Bluh, he shows up, okay?
Shows up. Alright, one is buying property right now that's developed in the parish.
Okay, so this guy shows up, if y'all come up with, and this man can come up with standards for a gravel road, an asphalt road, twenty-four feet wide, coves, everything. And y'all adapt that and send it to the police jury and they don't say, well, we don't want that, that's not y'all's problem, that's the residents' problem to deal with that. Y'all's done, y'all's fine, that's all I'm saying.
I know just what you're saying, and I've always been a proponent, because right now, servitude is two lines on a map. My whole thing to start with has been put in them gravel standards, and I don't care if you're only doing four lots on a servitude. Or one lot on a servitude, I don't care, it's a private servitude, put in your gravel road, and I'm kinda like you. When Granny gets in the back and can't do it no more, it's called a realtor sign on it, and she goes to the lodge. Be cold and critical all you want, when you can't do what you can't do, it's go, sell it and go. It's what the judge does when he does family petitions, when you've got thirty-five members and two and a half acres, you can't cut that pie small enough. His, the judge goes, no problem, I can divide dollars, sell it, get what you can from it and come back and see me, and I'm gonna break this pot up. Count out thirty-five piles and we're done.
Well, I appreciate y'all's time on Tuesday.
But that's.
So, I'm like you, though, I wanna give you the options. A couple of meetings ago. I, I asked for. Let's go to East Baton Rouge, get their standards and put them in here as gravel roads. But if a developer wants, he's got a, a long there piece of property, doesn't have enough frontage, and he, and we're gonna split it up. We ought not have to have blacktop roads, and it was a presounding no. So we did, we never, we didn't go down that path. But that was, I mean, that's what we were being told by the, so we did offer that up to the police jury. And so my opinion is that. The, the residents now need to go to the police jury with that concern. We, we offered that to them sitting here. Did we spend all of the time and money to put it in the, the ordinances and then send it up to them? Nothing, because that would've been a waste of time and a wasted money. But we're at the point now, as a planning and zoning committee, we know that they've told us point blank. You're not going to approve that. I don't know if their minds have changed on that, I don't think that they have. They also told us, we want a minimum of two acre lot size. We are trying, and the reasoning for that is they're trying to slow down the growth in this parish. What they, what they've said. And so, all of this is in an attempt to slow down the growth in the parish, but also there's concerns about emergency vehicles reaching people. My proposal was, okay, we'll put in, then require good gravel roads. And it, it, it does not start, we tried that, and so. Now, the concern needs to go to the police jury because we offered that up as a solution and we're told no.
And I agree with you.
Well, that's short sighted, I mean, anyone who's lived in this parish for forty years plus, for their whole life. That, uh, they actually believe or lying, that they think. An asphalt road up here is gonna be better than a gravel road. I mean, Neesum Road, Battle Road, as soon as these things get. Re-surfaced and then they turn it to the surface of the moon, I would go ten miles out of the way to avoid somebody's asphalt roads. And they just go to pot in no time, y'all don't know, I see your head shaking, and you're better off with gravel roads if you're not gonna do those right, so I mean, you can.
Yeah, but you can't do that, Josh, you can't do that, you, you're, you're.
I understand.
Can't move forward. No, no, you're trying to move here. You're moving forward on my dollar.
Well, the intent is not your dollar.
Yes, it is, it's my dollar.
It's not the intent of your dollar.
That's my dollar.
You have a whole different setup sitting in there, because you're on that gravel road, and honestly, we never had a discussion about what happened off the road gravel roads. That never brought.
But that's all I'm asking is for y'all to go back to the police jury and say. That's why, because if I, if y'all go on with this progress, when I get to, we get to the police jury or some other people do, you know what they're gonna tell us? Oh. Hold on, folks, our zoning board agreed with us and they've come up with this arguments. That's why we're here with y'all.
No, they're gonna throw that on y'all a lot.
They gonna throw the monkey on the police jury, that they're faced many times.
Where this come from, well, the planning committee's always been, I said, yeah, they tell y'all that because y'all backdoored this thing, y'all went to them, told them how to do it. Then you gonna sit up here like, oh, well, our hands are tied.
They did, they did it.
So, I mean, look, y'all, I, I respect y'all and thank God for y'all, I know y'all do this for no pay and, and it's not a fun job. But y'all are supposed to be one hundred percent independent, and I get it, you gotta hear feedbacks and stuff, I'm not being critical of all that stuff, but. I mean, y'all supposed to be one hundred percent, this is what we think, do with what you will, planning, uh, police jury, and, and, they're gonna do their part.
Can I ask, and I don't recall in EBR, but the gravel limestone roads, they allow EBR, is that only for private creation or is that private and public?
I do them all the time. In East Baton Rouge, there, you have, you have a private road, just like we have here. You have to have an apron that is thirty-two feet long. They apron, off the road with turnings.
But that's still a private road.
It's a private road.
It's a private road, and for some reason, their legal department years ago changed, they quit calling it private servitude, for some reason, it's a big deal, now it's private roads.
But you go down the road, the road, they come at you. The road has to be twenty-one feet wide, twenty-two feet wide, when you get to the end, it has to have a, to the end, a tee that comes off. That a, will support a fire truck plus an ambulance. Now, they get around, they build them all day long, what, that's what we're trying to do is to get y'all.
So let's just say that there's a whole lot of cut and paste that goes on from parish to parish when it comes to, no, 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 no need to reinvent the wheel, let's make it a regional. Situation, so when Mr. Cockman went, I, I know someone else who had these discussions about the gravel roads. You know, even though this body may be getting some resistance from the police jury, I mean, you could almost cut it, put it in more of the subdivision ordinance and, and present. Let it go up to a vote because they're a body.
So what, let me ask y'all's. We did, we did not discuss the gravel road. We did not discuss that.
It's gonna bother us.
Well. What he's saying is, we didn't discuss. What.
Division off of the gravel.
Off of the existing gravel parish.
Right, right.
Man, it doesn't matter.
No.
It makes a big difference.
No, no, what I'm saying is. Just because it's, the, the, the public road is paved versus gravel. Why would that impact? What the private servitude must do.
Cause in, in total, the objective of this is to move, to move to nicer situation. Gravel road, you want it better, I mean, you want it better, I mean, that's.
Crazy people, you do.
It's, now, gravel road, it makes no sense to go put a blacktop highway off of the gravel drive, you know what I'm saying, that just makes no sense there. We didn't bring it up.
Randy, you have a good point.
So, but.
They'll be long, they'll be those are harder than people.
But, but, but I don't think. Andrews Lane, for example, that means, okay, it might work for Halsey, but if you go to Andrews Lane, you're gonna have to put a blacktop.
Andrews is gravel.
Or not, what's, um, I don't know what's, uh, Battle. If you come off of Battle.
Yes.
No gravel servitude.
You wanna go, don't, don't use Black and Battle as a road to ride.
Well, but that's why it comes to your body, I've seen where the road coming into a new subdivision that's being. Asked upon as a preliminary plat from a developer, coming to the body considering parish, where they say, we wanna do it off of this road, but it's wanting to be road. This road was seventeen foot wide, standard clear states, a twenty foot minimum, lot, wide road, I'm sorry that the parish didn't serve you with a road wide enough, but we're gonna have to deny. This preliminary plat, and it's not allowed, that developer on this particular situation had to come in and they had to widen. A public road on their own dime, they had to spend money to do it in order to get their plat approved, I mean. So there are situations where you could deny an entire development because it's on a twelve foot wide road, when the standard says that it needs to be eighteen foot wide.
So what we're opening up again, what the man just said is, when I put my subdivision in on Halsey Road across from this aisle. I gotta rebuild this whole damn road for him to ride him down the road. That's what, hey, that, that's, I'm just saying, that's what this is.
You don't wanna add a hundred houses on that road that's twelve foot wide, you don't wanna allow someone, I wouldn't think, I would think you.
So that's what we're getting into.
So, so take me somewhere, there's a ton of lots, how many lots have you put on Neesum Road?
Bunch over the last seven years.
Seventy, I think one number seventy something on Neesum Road, there's no way to manage that. The traffic out there. On Neesum Road.
And if you imagine Neesum Road is eighteen feet wide.
Period. And I, I understand that, but there's, that's where we're going to.
Three parish roads, I can tell you that.
If you put three vehicles per house, which is probably about an inch, you know, you're coming in, two hundred something additional cars per day on that road. So, that's some of those things, the items you're talking about or not, you're talking about going and taking the properties you have and dividing it to four and put it back there, you're talking, not talking about going in here and putting it up here. There's no route in the parish currently, anyway, if you go back there and truly develop your property like a subdivision on a gravel road.
Because I would lose everything, I would go broke, because I would have to put water, roads, asphalt, everything, even if I got to as far as the. Line road, line road is only fourteen feet wide, so I'd have to take all the trees, all the way out. So what I'm saying is, is that y'all have to be careful with what y'all are doing as a zoning board and, and remaining, like the man said. Try that there, it's not, well, the police does not, police jury does not tell y'all what y'all are doing.
No, they, they ask.
Well, I don't care if they like it or not, that's y'all's job, okay? That's what we're in here talking to y'all about this, and that's why this man, he liked what's the traffic up. Y'all said you never even thought about the issue with the gravel road.
No.
I ain't never thought about it.
We're not about it, and the police jury said they.
Y'all, I'm telling my two different things, what Josh mentioned was, we never hold up a, a subdivision.
Off of.
Off of an already public gravel road.
Right.
That's what we didn't talk about. My point is, whether it's off of a gravel road or one of these, take, oh, they need some road. Neesum Road, putting in a blacktop servitude off of Neesum Road doesn't help with the traffic on Neesum Road.
Never gonna change.
Dollars, so if you. I, I just can't see the harm in putting in some gravel road standards for private servitudes. Off of something like Neesum, that's not a very good. Blacktop road. Well, what, what we meant was, we're not gonna approve it.
If we continue with not raising the standards, okay?
That would be raising the standards.
He does raise the standards.
Standard.
You just go on, you go on the gravel that, I mean.
Nope, ask the man right there.
But right now, we have no private servitude standards.
Standards, this man can give you standards for that road.
If we had standards for that, like some other parishes did, that would be in, in improving the standards of the parish.
Yeah, well, you gotta build a road for standards, and you gotta inspect that road, and then pass an inspection, that's a heck of a lot of value in two lines, on a sheer favor.
Then your fire truck thing and your little. That's when you, I, I'm, I'm trying, we're trying to agree, that then what happens is then that takes the issue off from the fire trucks. Ambulance, the granny at the end of the road, which I worry about granny, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm. We are, and that's the problem.
Well, I understand.
But, but, as much as you're talking about property usage and property rights, we're also turning around with granny. And having to deal with property usage and property rights.
That's not the parish's job, it's, the property's been sold.
But then it's not the job on the front side either, to worry about, but just understand what I'm saying.
Safety and welfare, creation of new lives, I know those three words right at the core.
But we're standing on both sides of the fence there, it's a problem, you know, the. I'd like to hear what y'all think, we didn't discuss the gravel road stuff. I personally don't think we need gravel coming off of the, a gravel servitude coming off of a blacktop road, that's why I'm saying. Give, help me out here, let's go one of the.
I'll start, I'm still in favor of. Proposing, even though they sat here and told us no, I'm still in favor of the parish having. An ordinance that allows well-built gravel private servitudes for projects, I'm still in favor of that.
And what is your maintenance plan for it?
Or you can't, you can't get into that.
You can't get into that.
We know that, but that's, that's where the complaints are coming from.
That's mine, I know, I mean, you can't, there's nothing to do with that.
Word is private. Private use, and you have no right to tell people what to do on a private use property.
All you can do is develop that standard, inspect the road and.
And turn it over to the landowner. It's a simple matter, they go to court and judge all the time up here. Okay? So.
What's your thoughts?
I'm just listening. I guess something was. Um, I, I, these are my, these are my thoughts, I've heard, that's not my problem about four times tonight. And I'd like to point out to all the developers in the room that over the last thirty years, of all of these subdivisions that y'all have been building. Have been developed better than a lot of the people who have moved into this parish over the last ten years, who are now my friends. Uh, from where I used to work, who screamed in my ear every day, keep the developers out. Uh, y'all done a better job over the last ten years, wouldn't be in this conversation. They'd say, hey, great, let's develop the parish, let's grow the parish, well, my, my brother-in-law ran on a growth ticket. He stood in this room and said, we need to turn all these hay bales into houses, he was defeated soundly. And so, these, these police jurors are elected officials who listen to our neighbors, and those are your neighbors who votes for you. And, and the neighbors are saying, we don't want reckless development, I'm sure there's a lot of good developments, when you start talking about putting in infrastructure. With the development, that's the right answer, you know, um, but in this area, there's enough people who have decided, I mean, look, five people from my work. Have moved here since twenty sixteen, you know, they all, they, they moved up here, and I mean, you can't stop the progress, what do we have, three people a day move in to use police unit of parish? Something like that, I mean, you're not gonna stop it, the only thing you can hope to do is, is kinda manage it a little bit. Um, you know, so. That, that's my feeling, the two acres slows that down a little bit and kinda throws a little water on it and lets it get developed, and realize it's gonna cut into a lot of people's profit margin. I'm very sorry about that, you know, but that is not the concern of the parish, much like Randy at the end of the road. I worry about Randy at the end of the road, because I'd like to be the, the paw at the end of the road one day, and I'd like to get an ambulance to be able to get to my house. You know, uh, so, you know, one of the concerns of the parish, and certainly is not the profit margin of the developers. And if two acres of lot slows that down, so. But I'm just telling you, you can run for police jury, you can say, well, police jurors who, who fight growth, they're gonna have to go, they're getting votes from fighting birth. And, and that's, and the people vote, they call them, they holler at them, I'll probably phone call them I don't know what I'm doing, I'm sure.
We're being watched, I'm sure.
If we ever get home.
Yeah, very much.
Really, you know.
I'm gonna say this, right here on my agenda for tonight, I got, was the public given one day to review this. We asked you in December, the mail was to us in December, I got it yesterday.
Oh, really?
Yesterday.
Okay.
So, you know, if, if the public, if we didn't get it to yesterday, how did the public get it? And I don't know how the public can even have.
I got it from him, accident, he called me, nobody else knows about this.
And when you look at, when you look at, and like you mentioned, the Ascension Parish still being in, right here on front page, it says subdivision with less than five lots. The next line says subdivision with five lots or less. Which is a direct contradiction to each other, you know, and there's several places in here like that. It, it's no way that we can vote on it yet. You know, and there's several places in here like that. It, it's nowhere that we can vote on it yet.
Let me tell you, it is kinda all official with the road, with the five lots or less and EBR or whatever. Like if that was gonna be called a minor subdivision, five lots or less, what we did all the time, and there was nothing, I mean, it was kosher. You would do four lots and then a big remainder. So that's five, right? You get that approved. You turn right back around, you take the remainder, do four remainder. So, you know, you're thinking, okay, well, they're, they got a hundred acres, they can only do five times. No, they can do, they can do that all day long. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, like I've always said, the best intended ordinances are never gonna be perfect. But, you know, we just wanna see why Randy's here, it's why he's going out and talks. And, I mean, I know y'all have talked it to the blue of the face.
Well, I know we gotta send something to the police jury. And, I mean, I'm in favor of throwing the two acres, just some JR news to them. But I don't see how we'd send this to them yet.
I feel like it's been back and forth with legal several times, probably three, four times. And I guess the conclusions between that, I mean, I, I really thought it was at the end and we were finished with what we wanted to present as a body.
It was the same as three, four times we've had the emails come out.
But, I mean, didn't we send in December saying we can have this in a week or so?
Yeah.
And we did. And I got it yesterday.
Yeah.
It's been there. It's been going around.
So if I only got it yesterday, how did the public have a chance?
We called that.
Well, that's, this is, so this is what it presents. This is what the public is to see.
Yeah, but.
It's what the vote gets to see it now. And then it goes in front of the jury and that's where the vote is.
And the smooth has to be ready when they set their public here.
Right.
I mean, just, if y'all had to been, I mean, being nice about this, cause it's six forty-five, I understand, okay? And I'm sorry, but I've got their job. But if y'all had to been nice, sir.
You gotta do it down later.
Well, I mean, the thing is, is if y'all had to been cooperative, been being a cooperative body, to even listen to these things. Because I, these people are sitting, I don't know what they, they probably don't get. They probably don't get my ass. You know, but I mean, you understand, I mean, and this girl, she, no, don't watch, she's in here. I probably did wrong.
She got, she got her, uh.
But, you know, so, like he's saying is, is, alright. As a body like y'all done tried y'all tonight, okay, but y'all gonna have to stay independent, just like this man says it right there. I would have never, I called this police, this, he didn't know exactly what everything was going on tonight. You evidently didn't either, did you? I mean.
But the last one we got had thirty-one pages. This one's got thirty-five. So I pulled off, I said, now what the hell, I pulled through my notes on thirty-five. Now thirty-five.
You know, it says five lots or less.
I mean, I'm just saying is it.
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot, go ahead, Joe.
No, I was just gonna say, it ain't your business to tell the jury, but that moratorium does supposed to expire February fifth. Yeah, I know, we're gonna get into that, but I'm just saying, they gonna have to do something. Jury makes again Monday? I know, don't they make it again this coming Monday?
Yes, I think they're supposed to. Remember, they got canceled from the snow, so they moved it to this week, which was last night.
But they still make Monday. So they're gonna, and that's gonna be the third, so they're gonna have to decide that, they're gonna have to discuss Monday, if they're gonna excuse the moratorium or what they gonna do.
Yeah, and I've got, I've got people that turned in maps to be there waiting for the, or to, to live. There might be one here in Nives.
Oh, we're gonna get it out there.
Uh, my concern is, we've gone through this, I've been on this thing so long, this is the third time we've tried to go to the police jury with changes. And they can't even get a second at the police jury to bring up any of the discussions that we had going back seven, eight, nine years now, after they went to East Leach Parish, did this company come here, spent eight, ten thousand dollars to come up with this grand deal, this plan. It wasn't good enough. They had no idea passing an east Leach County. Might have been good for a big residential areas and stuff, big parishes. So my concern is, and I, I understand exactly what you're saying and I agree with you a hundred percent. We present, if we make the changes we're talking about, it's going to treasure it. You know, and so we, in effect, wasted so much time because we can't get them to make a decision, to move forward. And another, and the things you talked about, we never brought up before. You brought it up, you're right. You were told, no. Well, you know what? Maybe we tell them, no, this is what we want. Blame us, so what? You gonna follow me? They're cutting my pay? Okay, good.
And I agree with you, gentlemen. We need to give them regulations for what we wanna see.
Right.
Not what they wanna see. And if they vote them down, they send them back to us.
You gotta keep sending them back.
They have to send them back. All they gotta do is chop out what they don't want. They don't understand the process to start here. They have line item. We tell them, we don't. We submit the package up and if they see something in there they don't like, they cut it out. They vote on if it's done. After, and they live with it.
Has the attorney, parish attorney seen this?
Yes.
And he's agreed to it?
He hasn't. We had no comments. The only comment he wanted was take the color out of it and underline it so you could tell what the new was.
And there was a phrase.
We clarified the definition.
Yeah, it was in definition.
He wanted us to tighten up the definitions a few things.
I just have a question. One at one time, just because I've been in these meetings, y'all mentioned about preventing, you know, someone having a piece of property getting it like a family partition and not being able to do anything with it for a certain amount of time. Y'all ever go forward with that or is that just an idea?
We haven't made it through this discussion.
No, that's, no, that's it. That's part of, that's part of what's written in the family partition. If you own a parish, you own the parish track for three years before you're allowed to.
Okay.
Do a family partition on the road.
I just wanted that from my.
So if you split it up with your family, you can't sell it.
No, you can't buy it and then intentionally use the hardship of family partition a month later. You can't to.
Either have it on it today.
Be owning today.
Right.
Or you.
Minimum of three years.
Yeah, cause that keeps, that.
I understand and I agree with that because the family, the problem with the family is.
The family partition is somebody like you that's owned a property for thirty years.
Well, no, that's not for me, really. It's not, because my deal is that, that's for someone that's got hardships for their family or whatever, and they need to take advantage of it. The contractor shouldn't be able to take. And by the way, I'm not a contractor. I've just lived in this parish and it's time to retire. And I'm tired of working. So I'll sell a piece of land and be here to sit on my ass and not get done. Oh, I see that's where you worried, that's on.
Been retired six months, it's awesome.
See, that's what I want.
So.
Uh, sir.
What?
A motion to state that the closest public hearing moved into our living room.
We can't vote on any of that, I guess.
No, we can't vote either, but my, just a quick question. Do we wanna have a discussion about adding or change or something to deal with the gravel road and stuff?
Yeah.
Would that be part of the motion?
We have, right here in our business, discussing, make recommendations.
Well, that's to discuss and make recommendations, but having this public discussion on this second, do we want to look at something here eight minutes from now in that part of the actual meeting? Or do we wanna roll through this and not allow that?
I give you all my perspective. I feel like we should, uh, leave generally for folks to put in gravel servitudes to a standard that the parish operates. And we have examples of that in some of the surrounding parishes, from what I understand. That's my perspective on it. Regardless of whether it's coming off of a blacktop or coming off of a gravel road.
We plug that into section one J in the definitions, the gravel road stands for private servitude.
Okay.
Three. We're talking about private servitude passing. We have to get into page twenty-eight specifications. We have to get to page twenty-eight to the specifications of what that road is.
Well, yeah, you can see what if you allow a gravel road in J for private servitude and then reference the other end.
Is there a way for us to end the public address and ask?
Yeah.
Let's post a public hearing.
I've been trying to like eyeball you to like hit that, but I just couldn't.
I'm sorry, folks. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Mr. Andy made the motion in the public hearing. I see all in favor. I oppose. Eyes have it. Alright, uh, let's see. Alright, we're about to begin the regular meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Can, Michelle, can you lead us in the prayer, please?
Father, we just come to you tonight for, that we just thank you, that we live in a parish that we can come and have open discussions and just decide things in the right way. Lord, lead, guide each one of us to make the right decisions. To be with this parish, be with us, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please, on your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Josh Oakwood.
President.
Debbie Owens.
Here.
Angela Anderson. Angie Bishop. Here. Bo Cotton here. Martin McDermott here. Matthew P. here.
Alright, has everybody had the opportunity to look at our agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Uh, has everybody had the opportunity to look at the, uh, November twenty-sixth regular meeting minutes? Actually, it's December tenth.
Yeah.
Oh, how many? December tenth.
Those are the minutes you got.
Um, alright, has everybody had the opportunity to look at the December tenth regular meeting minutes?
Yes.
Make motion to approve.
I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Uh, old business, um, I wanna move.
Did we move that to end and give the map out?
Let's get these folks out. Alright, uh, we can simply move that. That's not the, that's not the issue there. Uh, alright, let's.
Can we get another two first?
Alright, that's fine. Um, alright, all, uh, we're going to new business first. I'll massive and advertise as required. Uh, that brings Elizabeth Hughes Haygood map up. Uh, it's my, will y'all be representing that map? Could you take the podium and give a brief of what's going on right quick?
Mike Owens.
I'm gonna just give this little property around the position track that we already have. Three acres existing and then the tracking questions, you know, seven plus six acre track. One C dash D.
How many of the Haygood maps we could have?
We could do a lot of lamps and.
Six.
Yeah, taking it out of one lot and doing it with y'all.
Here we go.
I got one right here.
Alright.
She's just adding to your property. That's the seven, six, okay? Alright, on a closed public hearing, is anybody, well, I'm sorry, is anybody else here to speak on this map? Closed public hearing. I can give a recommendation on this map?
I'm gonna leave it up.
Second.
You have a vote?
Yes.
Angie Bishop. Bo Cotton?
Yep.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew P.?
Yes.
Josh Oakwood.
Yes. Alright, let's drop back to, um, Alan Ronald Johnson, pass it.
Yeah, live everything. We've been talking about these two maps. They are, both these maps are, well, this map, we're creating four tracks, one of them trucking on four twelve just west of, um, the intersection with Plank Road right there returning and a big seven come in. And the bottom nine of these two maps y'all are gonna see in nine to nine, they were submitted under the current ordinances, you know, and we're discussing about changing everything, so. It is a twenty-five foot servitude to get to N one D, N one C, and N one B. Doing both these maps as a preliminary plat, proposed on the proposed subdivision. I think the last month I did a similar thing where y'all approve it and, uh, then we do the field work and then I come back in with a final map so y'all can review and see that there's no major changes and we go on with it. I can say, no, we're not trying to change things, but you can only go by the date and time that the map is submitted. The ordinances that exist with the map submitted, so it is what it is.
Anybody else here to speak on this map? Closed public hearing. Can I give a recommendation?
I've been heard five variations of the moratorium. One, it's not ten.
That's what they did in February.
Moratorium, you can do four lots right now.
What is the moratorium?
Anything over four.
Anything over four lots.
This will get chopped up again.
And Wesley Shannon was under one for like four years.
Yeah.
So we're trying to.
So this is one where exactly what we're talking about, changing because of that, where there's no standard for.
This is under the current law.
And this will get rolled again, looks like.
And this is actually, I didn't even say those four. It's just actually four people, only Alan Johnson and his wife and then a group of line one properties.
Yes.
That twenty back there will probably end up.
But then what y'all, if they change it, so yeah, who knows? Could be a rude adjustment.
I mean, nothing in here goes against the current.
No.
No.
Nothing.
Nothing. No reason for those not to approve.
Nope. Move to a second map.
Debbie Owens?
Yes.
Shirley? Angie Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton?
Yep.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew P.?
Yes.
Josh Oakwood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that brings us to.
Don't get me into that, by the way.
Yes.
That brings us to Randy Taylor map, please.
Oh, same similar thing, you know, it's, uh, this is for Randy Taylor. His property is at the very end of Black Lane. He's got seventy acres and cut into three tracks. The, uh, track C four A is thirty-five acres and we have the fronts on Black Lane. And then we're running the twenty-five foot servitude on the easternly property lane to get to the three tracks in back and you can see their sizes, they're ten acres to fourteen acres. And then turn the servitude to get to the final track, C four D. Also showing a thirty foot wide dedicated demo utilities servitude for the track, so it's the exact same similar deal of which I just approved, um. That's where it's at, to do the Black Lane, which is a gravel road.
Anybody else wanna speak on this map?
It's Randy. You got a lot to talk, you come on.
No, well, that's.
Closed public hearing. Can I give a recommendation?
Debbie Owens?
Yes.
Angie Bishop?
Yes.
Bo Cotton?
Yeah.
Martin McDermott?
Yes.
Matthew P.?
Yes.
Josh Oakwood?
Yes.
Thank y'all. And just, I have to make one comment. Uh, I'm a bagger, may not, cause I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get to it. But I've got another similar client that's got, uh, on, uh, they go over the road, gravel road. They legit want to try to get a piece of their son, and I think retiring from the air force, so it's a family petition and it's gonna be three or four tracks. And I was gonna do the same thing here, not knowing what we may end up with. Cause I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get to it anytime, attorney, Monday, but I was thinking about that today. Even if I had gotten Monday, y'all had submitted something for a. Because I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get to it anytime, attorney money, but I was thinking about that today, even if I had to get in money, y'all submitted something for approval, and the jury would have said that they would approve something Monday night. Still wouldn't matter, because it would beat the clock by a few hours, so I'm just, I'm just saying. Circuit's gotta be hamstrung too, and we need to have advice, people, and that's why I'm doing these things as preliminary plaques to say. It should be approved, let's make sure we get the approval before I spend more of your money to then go do the fieldwork, so I'm just saying y'all know, thank y'all.
Is there a whole map?
That's what I'm saying, that's what.
Yes. I don't see why you're.
Somebody else here.
Derek, no worries, you hit Laddner's here. Um, let's address them and see what they look like, and then we'll. If we've done a pass, we can say. Alright, that leads us to the Roy Schmidt map. Uh, anybody here to represent? Alright, uh.
Who's the chairman?
Derek.
Yeah, we probably. Thought we didn't look at this. Yeah, didn't we look at something like, I guess?
They got multiple problems.
Well, but this is right, not their houses.
Well, imagine they're, they're, they're probably, I don't know for sure. But they got one son that's gonna move into their house, I think.
Yeah, well, that's what I heard, and I thought we looked at it a couple months ago.
They're, they're, I'm assuming they're gonna probably cut out an acre, two acre dealers, I don't know what the map looks like, but probably what it is, to build now, their deal, their house.
Yeah, probably, but. I mean, it's cutting. Basically an eight, eight-two and a ten-nine, however. Did nothing wrong with it. Anybody else here to speak on this map? Closed public hearing, can I get a moment?
Move to accept the map.
Second. You're second. Debbie Owens.
Yes.
Andy Bishop.
Yes.
Bo Cotton.
Yep.
Martin McDermott. Matthew P.
Yes.
Josh O'Quinn. Yes. Alright, that brings us to the Norwood Property Group LLC map, anybody here to represent this map?
Can I look at it, and I can maybe explain more to you? Yes.
Do you hit Laddner?
Yes, basically, he's just cutting down an acre, I'm working with him on permits. He's cutting out one little square, him and his partner, and then they wanted, they each wanted a camp on it, and they couldn't do two, two mobile homes, which forced them to have to, to divide up their, their property. So they're gonna have one mobile home on one side of the camp, and they're gonna have, the other doctor's gonna have his mobile home on the other side. So they just had to do a split, so that they would be in the side that ordered us to get a permit, you can't have two mobile homes on one of his property.
That answered that question very well.
I don't really know that.
Is it, in the new world with the two acres minimum, this wouldn't, is that, is that what that would, hard be the?
I don't know the exact, I, I don't know where the line draws, I think it's.
So you got point five eight acres?
Oh, yes, so technically in the real world it would pass. Scenario to the actual mountain.
But the five eight exists. No, it's a trade, no, no, in that case, you'd be two completely new lots, under a parish, I mean. Now. Honestly, in that case, it's ownership, so it would be family division, so it's ownership in that case. So that, in that case, that could be, and that's what's gonna happen with a lot of the trailer stuff, is it's gonna fall on family division.
Then it's gonna wait three years, and they gonna settle it, and you gonna have the house.
Well, no, but we're having that problem, I mean, that, we can't get away from it. We can't get away from it, but that's, that's the route for some people in the community to be able to do what they wanna do. It's not.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Alright, um, quote, anybody else speaking on that, it's closed public hearing, any recommendation?
Move to approve.
Yep.
You're second. Debbie Owens.
Yes.
Andy Bishop.
Yes.
Bo Cotton.
Yep.
Martin McDermott.
Yep.
Matthew P.
Yep.
Josh. Let's go back to.
Um, Matt, before we end, um.
We're not ending.
Well, this conversation, so I have this map that's been here since maybe November-ish, um, it's six lots, I believe. Um, it was supposed to go on the agenda for February, because it's supposed to end, so what are we, it's not gonna end, we're gonna extend it.
They're probably gonna extend it.
Doesn't want the jury to do it Monday night.
Okay.
If, if they don't extend it, if they don't extend it.
This is just a little spot for me, because I just made the hats and public side, either put in the hotel, so it's been holding on to it for seasonal grades.
We just have to wait.
You don't even pretend to know it all.
Alright, so let's move back to discuss and make recommendations on the R one minimum lot size. This will be a roll caller giveaway. So our A is discuss and make recommendations of zoning ordinance provision concerning R one minimum lot size.
We're starting about this.
Well, just need, yeah, just need to make a motion, that's, that's not any discussion on that in particular, really.
This one right here.
That's increasing lot size.
That's increasing lot size.
Now make a motion, we accept it.
I say.
Alright. All in favor? Opposed? Ayes have it.
That's across the board for R one zoning.
That's R one zoning minimum lot size.
Two acres.
Yes.
But that's just R one zoning, so are we saying you have smaller than two acres and other zoning?
Doesn't do anything to commercial, doesn't do anything to, A two is already over three acres.
I mean, like, or, there's or three and four that's smaller than.
That's all depend, but you gotta rezone to that anyway.
But if you do, you'll have smaller two acres, right? Or whatever it says you can have.
R four, you're gonna have to have at least ten acres probably, because that's the trailers.
Okay.
But you know, R means that kind of thing. That never arisen.
Alright, here we go, to the, discuss changes and make recommendations to subdivision ordinances. We. In my opinion, which trailer made good point about gravel road situation, coming off of gravel roads, um. That's. We decide what we, I mean, we have the opportunity to make a change right now, right now, something different to go on, this is fluid until they pass it. So you can change a lot of lives, they can take and change, so, um, but what?
Well, I gotta say this, I mentioned J R, this is the bottom of your first page.
That we've done, that we need to do that.
On the second page, number two, this is all those subdivisions major and minor, there's no descriptions of major and minor subdivisions.
Anything above a five?
Huh?
I think it's anything above a five.
What's major, what's minor? You've got simple subdivisions, then you got major and minor.
We talked about that before too, if we're not gonna define that, I don't, why would we put that, like, it needs to be a, if, if we call out. Major versus minor, but there needs to be some definition for this to work.
Come at me again.
Page twenty, it says the planning commissioner chairman has to sign all the acts.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're aware of that.
Sure, there are.
You should say two numbers.
No, it says all max, he's gonna sign all max.
Yeah, what I'm saying, we should be okay with two of those numbers.
Now, on page twenty.
Why, why are we lowering your fees again? I didn't understand that.
Well, y'all, we talked about it, but I don't remember when.
Why are we lowering the fee if we paying people more as time goes on?
Right.
Why are we lowering?
So it's the intention that the parish doesn't have to cover the cost of paying the review engineer? You collect the fees for your head here.
Right, thank you.
And we directly.
Yeah.
And then they doubt, god, thank you.
It prevents a developer from.
Okay. Yeah.
Taking up too much time on that.
So the fees from here, and then they have to pay, whereas we, we had one that just went over quite a few thousand, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
That.
And you only collected twenty-five hundred dollars per second.
Right, which was seven or eight thousand worth of fees, you know, for the trash and the, for the big amount.
And that's for anyone, any, that, that's not for our company, that's for your engineering reviewing.
Right.
We, we may be out next year, and the new P R A will do the same thing.
Page twenty, you've also got, most X is still. Well, I mean, still, how do we approve it on its?
Well, we had to get the, we had to get the final before you can go back and plug that in, I mean, it's.
You got, y'all have.
You guys had a format done before you could plug in those numbers.
We are sitting here in this discussion, this is what goes, and we're having this discussion to lead from here to go there. You know, and they will see what our recommendation is, we're still forming our recommendation and what we're gonna tell them. That is what this meeting is for.
So we're gonna make a recommendation to now, and not put proper numbers in the. Just have a bunch of X's in here.
No, we're correcting it right now. This is what it's here for, is to catch the blemishes and catch the violence right now. And, and you're sitting here having public comment, that's why you're having public comment, e- even if we don't agree, this is what public comment is for, for if we need to make changes.
Well, for example, page twenty-nine is blank. Page twenty-nine has a format. Format.
Yeah, he only stated that, but he.
Nine, nine, nine.
He talked about those places.
Except for we're gonna have to do formatting.
Yes, he did.
Yep.
Yeah, the vice review, we got the net.
We're gonna plug in that gravel road standard back there, and the way they'll do the roads, that's gonna change the format again, we're gonna have to put in the parish.
Okay. Well, y'all.
Making those and clean it up the best we can, and we add gravel roads to it, we define.
Second.
And that's regardless of, make sure we're clear, is that, regardless of what surface the public road is that it's coming off of? Or is that strictly off of gravel?
So.
Strictly off of wherever it comes off of.
Right. Then we're not changing much. I mean, we're not making much of a change.
Other than we're gonna have.
But we're, but it's still not gonna solve. But.
Won't that establish a standard for gravel?
It establishes standards, but it'll put, but it'll put a less expensive roadway, and look at the map here that will eventually most likely be behind some houses that are existing houses, if people have been there in rural area, and it no longer will be rural area. So, that's where this discuss, I mean, those houses in front have been there as long as I can remember, you know, well before my.
Not sure where I'm from.
Not sure, it's not sure.
From, uh, Fort Wood.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's where the discussion was, was this stuff being very inexpensively, being able to be stuck behind other stuff and tucked in in small areas and stuff like that.
Kind of a little quick, little rush, real short here. You gotta realize, like, on four twelve, Scott, I mean, uh, Matt, um, what's, uh, four twelve, what's the one that cuts two thousand pounds, buys a public school, a little charge, what's that road right there?
It what?
Anyway, okay, you gotta realize, all them people, I was there before, any of them people. They came there and they had a, you know, boy, they bought forty acres and threw a motor truck truck in there, I don't know, any of y'all know who they bought? Oh, boy, it was a big stamp, okay, and they come to their stuff there that people live in and says, why don't y'all sign up for petition, we says, no, because. You can't, you had a chance to live in an area that was, had already zoned, rural housing, you know, housing, restricted, everything. But these people come out here to this parish, and they buy this rural property, and after the games, they play, and game's over with, they wanna change the rules. And then they come running to y'all, get y'all to change the rules, you know, and that's what you get, then you get yourself into all of this other stuff.
And, and, and I do, we, I do understand.
I'm just saying, that's all.
No, 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 I'm not disagreeing with you particularly, but it's also becoming the part where we're chopping stuff up so inexpensively that it is. It's costing so little for developers and developers to come in here from outside and chop up stuff that is putting. I mean, it's put, you have a bigger piece of property, but technically, somebody can come down on, though, I don't know how big y'all got, but.
Going to place, I got the thirty-five in front of mine. And the guy in the front can buy the thirty acres, thirty-five acres in front of my property, okay?
And that's.
And turn our, okay, but the dickers, what we do is, like, on Andrew, on in different places, you have to put it in there, it's in, that's another thing y'all can do that the recommendation helps. On how you do it, your. It's like, Chris, when you have a title, it means a problem, it can be, can't be resplit, the property's clean, you know what I'm talking about? How do you, you go, you should.
So where do you draw, so that brings it right to one, where do you draw that line? So where does, so it can't be resplit, where's the resubmit? Cause everything's been split.
Number one is not the property like that I have right there, I use a thirty-five acres, it's gonna just tell you. If y'all change the rules to three pieces of property on a blacktop road, guess what? Only one piece touches the blacktop, I mean, the parish road, so the other two pieces will have to have a road to it. So that's what I'm saying is, y'all, when you, once you put one dimension on a road, you can't reuse the road, does that make sense?
Like, the road.
Once you put the private servitude.
Oh, you can't come back and touch it again.
You can't expand further.
That stops all of that.
So the guy with thirty-five acres would have to create his.
His own thing come through y'all to get approval, which would make, see what I'm saying, that'd make the road.
That's already established there.
Yeah, but what y'all saying is.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, but.
So if, so the, so the Johnson map you were talking about, to get that big chunk.
You do there.
The big chunk down there at the end of the private service. We have something in the ordinances already that would say you cannot extend this private service.
They let enough access come down, be there, I mean, that's, I'm not faulting them for that, because it is. But, I mean, they'll be able to run it up the servitude back there and do it again.
That's the stuff, y'all, to me, that, I'm not, that's the stuff that y'all can, can help a lot with, and educate the district. To me, there's a way of doing, I don't know how, maybe that may.
It's been discussed, I know for eight months, you know.
I mean, I feel like we're, we're, we're trying to do better and trying to move forward by just requiring more and better ways to be put in, if it's gonna be accepted by the public. If it's not, it's gonna be private, right now, we're limited. The ability to cut lots off of a private servitude without it being a hardship or getting a variance.
So that stops it now, correct. So like, my piece of property, which is a thirty-five acres in front, would have to have another road in it, but guess what, I don't have another road for me to have another road, do I just? So I didn't shop myself. You see what I'm saying? So it's, 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 I'm just saying it's.
You would not have been able to create those, three lots, was it?
Yes, I saw the map on somebody's, it was on children.
You would not have been able to create those lots without putting an asphalt road in.
Exactly. So that's, that's what I'm saying, is we all understand that, like.
Take for example, where's the Johnson, that's, that's the one that.
It's always, they're always gonna come around the back way on me every time.
Oh, yeah.
I don't, I'm not, I don't know, so this man's singing before, there's every kind of trick in their finger, you're not gonna stop.
I mean, maybe he can take yours and put, I mean, just in case of yours, he can turn around, put it to two kids and I.
Exactly.
And others, and, or, I mean, that's, that's the way that is, you know.
But you know, but, I mean.
But you're a person who exists here, so that's.
I want something nice for my parish.
Right.
But I also want something economical, I know she, but I want something that granny can get an ambulance to and get home, okay? But the same thing, I can't afford to bite the bullet for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of asphalt road, to come. But the same thing, I can't afford to bite the bullet for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on asphalt road, to come off ground. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't have a gallery sessions.
Unless you help.
But I still wanna have something nice that can fix this, you know.
What's, what's asphalt costing right now? Get around it, it's my tone, it's so.
Hackers, did you have to?
I would say it's a, oh, I talked to Jamie Northworthy, I actually went and talked to him about asphalt in that road, which was ridiculous, but, I mean, I thought about it, and I forget it was like five hundred thousand dollars.
How long?
Well, he looked, looked at the map, it's like thousand feet one way and what, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hundred feet. It's more than that, but then you gotta turn, you just can't put, that's another thing.
You still have to bill a base.
You have to bill a base, you have to put drainage in there, when you put the drainage in, then you get the next deal, whenever y'all come to put the lots in, or y'all come to sell, you know, to do the lots, the, the, guess what, y'all gonna have to shoot grades for the coves. You just can't stick the coves there.
That's over.
That's over. This parish is gonna get away with it for years because they have no drainage system. But when you go to this here, then y'all gonna have to have a drop, you have to have coves, be shot grades, and all it gets really, it's, you know.
Can I ask, what's the, what's the servitude passage on the one that you just said, the one that was on the map tonight, thirty-five foot?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five feet that I would.
And you don't have to answer, but what are y'all intending on doing with that now, is it gonna be a, which, gravel road?
I'm in the process of trying to make a deal to find out which way I can, I would prefer to get a twenty-four foot wide. State highways are twelve foot lanes, okay? So I want, the line in Andrew's lane is twenty-four feet, okay, and it's been watered a little bit, but then I wanna put that in there. Then I wanna try, I'm either gonna go with limestone or a gravel base or something like that. But, I mean, that's.
But do you have the room with it being a twenty-five foot servitude to make a road?
I can put wherever I want, of course, now, it's on my.
Once it's proved, he can build it, hey, hold it, and I do another revision to the base.
Okay, you gotta take it six hundred feet.
Yeah, I mean, all that, it's, but that's, I have to get this done before I can even get to that point. Like, I went today, I went the other day, and I went in and put the deal up, I made the deal with DMC to put the full power in there. And I'm trying if I can get this, well, that's another thing that I'm not putting it to the monkey on y'all's butt. Like the deal when y'all talking about this stuff, okay, y'all don't realize, you wanna try to deal with this water company. What, you don't see, calling, calling nothing.
We see them rather often, and you see, but that's a conversation, the water company kinda run to you.
Yeah, they will, believe it or not. Y'all put in, not y'all, whoever did, the, what was that, the police next to us over there, what's the name, hit the road back there? I got a servitude road right next to my property, okay? They, the water company put water in two-thirds of the way down to that point, ran the water. Put the power, the mild box boxes are two-thirds of the way down that servitude road. They mail, the garbage cans are in front of the houses.
Well.
So, see, that's what I'm saying, is this.
Back to this.
Yes, sir.
What we were talking about earlier is, once it's, there's a stall, there's something in order to go around, once it's split off of a private servitude, it can't be.
Once you make it to the certain number on the servitude, you can't continue to use servitude to increase number. So once you hit the four right now, you can't go anywhere.
So for them to split this twenty acres of.
If you talk about that, put another, another servitude.
But where would that even come from?
It can come on the other side of the property company.
Someone would have to give up land.
Yeah.
To create that, and would sell it to open a servitude license, or even have a.
So it's not just automatic, like, they can't just say, the last guy back here that buys twenty acres, you can't say, oh, I'm gonna split my twenty acres out and not put any more.
Unless he almost gives his children, and the jury's allowed to change the servitude, and owes up another camp where.
Well, I mean, so much that can, we're trying to make some progress.
I'll say one last thing on these roads, and most of y'all know that, Mr. McDermott, you come out, going over, we've been dealing with this fifteen years plus, and three or four committees and everything. But the big two things with these private gravel roads and servitudes, the two main things was the once-in-a-lifetime deal that everyone said was unconstitutional, you'd only do that one time in your lifetime, and that was it. They've been saying after thirty years, they need to get rid of that, so that was the big deal. And then everyone was saying, if we just had standards instead of two lines on a sheet of paper, that would solve the entire world's problem. They say that for fifteen years, and then when we came up with these different ordinances, the two or three revisions that never got second from the police jury, they kinda hung their hat all of a sudden on, because we had different things, it had to be sixty foot wide, then you could do whatever, fifteen, seventeen lots, well, people didn't like that, but they lost sight of the fact, okay, well, fine, and keep it to four, but it's, it's, it's still the standards y'all said you wanted. So even if you do the roads, gravel roads off of whatever service, gravel, whatnot, like I've always told the jury, you can change and tweak anything at any time, I mean, why not implement that? Get two, three, four-year track record, see how these roads are doing, see how that's going, I'm talking about the jury, and look at that and go, hey, this is a beautiful thing, or no, this ain't working. You can always go back and say, no, we want horse service, so, I mean, you're talking about improvements, I'm just saying, historically, that's what they were trying to get done forever, let's just get some standards for a gravel product road. And that is a huge improvement over two lines on a sheet of paper, and then, and then start implementing that stuff, see what it looks like, and do you like it or do you don't like it, and the jury can change it, I mean.
And when we get it to that point, we've already had a guy come in here with twelve hundred acres on Midway, and we told him when he drew the map and put the ones along Midway, we made him put sixty-foot servitudes in there and service that land behind it, cause he had so much, cause he came in with thirty, no, you gonna put sixty, because you gonna have to build a road, if you gonna do anything with that back there. So get that, redraw your map, put in sixty-foot servitudes, if you gotta put a road. But even talking about big land.
If, if we leave the four-lot servitude, so, it still leaves a lot of, which, I mean, there's, I mean, we had thirty-something calls when the stuff came in, when they announced for the stuff going on in St. Francis, for real estate agents doing little pop-up substitutions, little quick substitutions. So that stuff will, we're not gonna be able to stop. So we allow that to keep going, tell me.
Two acres will slow it, slow that drastically down, because they got money.
It's gonna slow it, but it's not.
The road and two acres will stop the half acre development.
I mean, you can go in there and put a quarter-mile road in to those or in, in four days, you know, you're not looking at major money to have to do with that.
I don't disagree with you.
I think the jury loses.
Some of them are doing that.
Well, no, no, I absolutely agree with you there.
It resolves the concern about the safety vehicles making it to the people in the back.
It does, it, I don't know if it fixes our problems, but.
Tell me, you're getting behind people and.
Getting behind them, and, but, I mean, or would you be happy if they come in and put a house on the property line right behind your property?
No, but what I'm saying, you can't, like, that's their, like.
That's their use.
That's their use.
Their, that's their use of the property, it's not their use to divide it into small portions and that stuff there. I mean, that's, I'm, no.
I see where you're, I know where you're headed.
But is that what y'all want the parish to be?
It's not our.
I think the jury's getting their eye off the ball completely, I mean, for forty years, most of my stuff's been these little exceptions and stuff, and look at all the subdivisions in the South, down there in Lindwood and all that stuff. You, you get five or six subdivisions, it's got whatever the lot numbers are, fifty-six and three hundred lots, you realize how many little mom-and-pop, four, eight, four-lot deals you gotta do to even remotely approach that? So, I mean, it's like, there's like, we wanna stop this big stuff, but we're gonna hamstring the mom-and-pop, and I know you got some developers coming in doing that, but that ain't the issue.
But, so we're sitting looking, and I'll argue with you on this thing, if we approve in ten maps a week of month that have six and seven lots in it, we're approving seventy, sixty to seventy lots.
If you, if you, if you're only doing four, you're only doing four.
Well, it's four, but they divide in front, you'll have, most of them, you'll see two lots on the front, and then four on the left.
Let's legalize anything about that.
No, 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 but we're seeing per month, sixty, seventy lots per month in these non-organized subdivisions. So we're seeing quite a number, we're seeing more in those subdivisions, well more than we're seeing in developed, standardized type.
Look, I'm not, I, I, we all want a beautiful parish, and we all want this thing to stay rural and all that, and I made this point before, and it went totally over to some of the jurors' head. Like, they thought I wanted to see this have four hundred fifty thousand people, I simply made the point one night, geographically, East Leachian is almost identical size of East Van Ruve Parish. They got four hundred fifty thousand people, we got twenty thousand, we got tons of room for growth. Am I saying that I come in and wanna see four hundred fifty thousand? No. But you can't be the little dyke boy, the Dutch boy sticking his finger, thinking ten years, twenty years, we're not gonna have fifty thousand people here, it's come.
No, no, no.
Just a matter of time.
Now, I mean, but, and we're gonna see big developers coming, we're gonna see big developers coming, there are big developers involved in this parish right now, trying to buy property, and they're title searching in this parish right now, there's gonna be big developers that none of us can do anything about.
And you, he knows better, he can, you can trade it off with green space and.
Absolutely.
Things that'll develop to keep the road tight.
This has been a discussion I've had in front of the police jurors, they're gonna have the two lots, and they're gonna turn around and say, hey, I can do green space, and I can do quarter acre lots in the front. Those things are gonna happen, and it's eventually gonna happen. So we got to manage what we can manage, where it's not running people over.
I understand.
Existing, the people that are here.
We understand that, but what I'm just saying is that, um, you know, why don't, I, I mean, this, y'all just disagree, but why don't you go with the, like, the, the, the lots and stuff, the four lots now, do you know how many people who has moved into this parish? All these four-lot deals and five-lot deals, that this has happened to them, okay? Sure be happening, they have a problem with the four lots. You know the problem they have with, is the other end of this parish down there, they're scared to death, because, see, I've been here forever, he's been here forever, most of us been here and lost our lives around here, okay? But you can't stop all that, I know that, but these people who've came up here, they're like, oh, my God, you're fixing, you know, to them, but, but you can't stop that.
No.
So what I'm saying is, the small lot things, that's more of a sub, of, if you go on these things, most of, all the people know each other. I mean, I don't like him, he lives across the road, I like his kids, okay, but not any of them, but, you know, but you become neighbors, and it's a small environment. It's homely, you feel nice, you know, and that, and that's what you get with these four, small lots, instead of a large subdivision.
So when a, when a developer comes in though with a good plan, like you're talking about, and infrastructure and green spaces and all this kind of stuff, they won't have any trouble getting repaired.
No.
That, that kind of.
Smart.
Smart growth, yes, smart growth, yeah, I mean, you might as well fight that.
And that's what we're saying about this here, is like, with the sort of the hamstring and the small little fellow that's trying to, to do a four-acre lot thing, give them a little room, like Jeff said, recommend this. The police jury may say, oh, no, it's me straight back, y'all, okay, that's not y'all's problem, y'all did it, it's somebody else's job to go up there and explain that, this is what we're trying to talk about. You know what I'm saying? I mean, to hell, and like the lady said with Grandma, I mean, I agree for a hundred percent, I didn't wanna, I was just, I'm just trying to get a point, but, I mean, I agree with that. You need some kind of restrictions on these roads, I've never had to have a problem with it, cause I built them to standards where you could asphalt them, okay? Other than limestone, other than like, if I didn't ladder or put saws in there, okay? But you could've came there and put asphalt on our roads, all right? I used crushed concrete, ten inches deep on all these roads. And, I mean, once you drive over that, so that's what I'm saying, well, that's what I'm, and this was just like, so.
I mean, we got a motion on the floor, it's been second.
I don't even remember what it was at this point.
Too many, somebody.
Clean it up and have it.
Clean up the, clean up the formatting as best we can, add in the gravel road or the servitude.
Yes. And restrictions on the way to be built.
Well, the gravel road stand, it's gonna be, gravel, gravel roads acceptable on a private servitude, and then we're gonna need to pick the, put it up there, grab it back in the road part.
He said off the ether, and Mr. Am said off the ether, whatever comes up, though.
Yeah, it don't matter, it's a private servitude. That way we can just, because they'll buy all day long about the road I live on is supposed to be ten feet wide, it's twenty feet wide, because the motor ends are steadily increasing it.
All right, you got it.
Hold on a second, what do we?
My question is, are you gonna do the verbiage for the amended document?
You just send it to me, just send it to me, and I can plug it in.
Plug it in?
Yeah.
You can give me a word. It's a cut and paste from other parishes, and we have to figure out a shoe horn in here. And, and you guys make that recommendation and put it up to the load of the jury, and see what they do.
And if they don't like it, they can gut it out, just like we've gutted it in, they can gut it out.
And that's their, their job.
That's their prerogative.
All questions. Both.
All favor.
Opposed.
You would do it, Eric?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren, y'all have anything? No legal advice or here?
Oh, the comment, Mr. Brady, would you like to have?
I'm sorry, I will apologize to all y'all, y'all fine, but this was coming to a head, it's gonna just knock the end of it, because the police jury is gonna throw it down again. And then that's gonna be between our, y'all done y'all's job, y'all did a correct job, I mean, y'all did an excellent job, which, you know, not to say you agree with me, but y'all, you know.
No, but this is for discussion, this is for discussion.
And the police jury is gonna get themselves in a tight spot with this invention, because.
They're already in a tight spot.
They're gonna have, they can't have, they can't make everybody happy with it.
They're getting sued over this stuff, they're getting the, they're losing fire prevention money over this stuff right now, I mean, that's prop, cause they can't do that, they're losing a lot right now. That's the reason they're headed down. I tend to agree with the other way, I come from, I mean, I grew up doing stuff differently a little bit, but, I mean, I understand where it's coming from, but I think we're I think we're not, I understand what we're approaching, but I don't think we're accomplishing that.
They're sending it there, they can cut it right back out and not.
They can cut it right back out, I think they're gonna pause, I imagine they're gonna do like they've done every time, it's not, I'm not like it.
Then, then that has needs to be voted out, I don't know what else to say.
Well, let's put it this way, you heard me get up there and say before, you have the recommendation, do any of what you want.
The public needs to.
I'm not gonna give them the recommendation.
They're gonna do their job.
But.
They need to do their job, the, the public needs to go to them and say, you need to do your job, or get out, if you don't wanna vote, you get off the police.
Kind of like I told one of them one time, they told me, said, I said, I can't believe y'all got a raise, eighteen thousand dollars, you know what they told me? You just don't realize how hard my job is, I said, the job you ran from paid the first month, you didn't run for a raise, you run to do it. They asked me, the police jury should be volunteer, okay?
I don't listen to that.
And I.
Motion to adjourn.
All favor.
You guys said. Somebody goes, if you want to do the signature.
That's not in there yet.
If you go, if you put it, you're gonna have.
It's not in there yet, that was.
Okay, there's nothing for it.